Alright, good evening everyone, happy new year. We're gonna go ahead and get going and we'll start with roll call.
Thank you, Mayor LaBarre.
Here.
Mayor Potem Case.
Here.
Councilmember Connors.
Here.
Councilmember Nakai.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Art.
Here.
Councilmember Zuluaga.
Here.
Thank you.
Hey, this evening, we are starting with ceremonies, presentations, and appointments, and we did have people to impart beautiful on the agenda, but we're moving that to January 19th. So, we're gonna move on to B, which is appointments to various boards and committees, and I'm gonna go ahead and let Suzanne walk us through those.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, as we do every January, we start the new year with appointments to some of the boards and committees. This night, this night, we have for consideration, we have the Board of Adjustment, the Planning Commission, and the Board of Review. I'm gonna take them one at a time, go through the openings, who's applied, and then allow council to interview, etc. So, we'll start with the Board of Adjustment this evening. There are currently two available regular positions and two alternate positions available on this board. We advertised as per council's requirements and put the ads out, the applications were due back to us on December 28 by 5:00 PM. We received two applications, and they were from the two incumbents. And we received an application from Lou Ramone and Nick Abercrombie, willing to serve again. I believe both of them, yep, I see both of them are in the back. They're here, able and willing to answer any questions that council may have of them, and if council would like to appoint them, I'm prepared to swear them in this evening.
Lou, we'll go ahead and start with you, if you don't mind. If you just come up to the podium, just let, Tricia Council's very familiar with who you are and your background, but if you just give us a short rundown of who you are, your background, and why you'd like to continue serving, that would be nice.
Okay, I've been on the Board of Adjustment for about seven years and have been the chairman for the past four years. My background prior to that, prior to moving up here, I was working as an engineer and a manager at NASA in Houston, working any number of different space projects. And I think we've had a very successful, thanks to people like Mr. Abercrombie, a very successful season last year with the Board of Adjustment. We had some cases that we adjudicated. We also updated the rules of procedure, which the city council approved of, and I appreciate the help we got from them. I look forward to continuing on with the board for another term. And frankly, I think that may be, well be enough, because one of the things that we are suggesting to the Planning Commission, and maybe coming to you guys later this year, will be some changes to the city code to establish term limits for the members of the Board of Adjustment, just as many of the other boards of the city have. If you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Lou, if you could just get Congress to get some term limits.
Very good, David.
I think working through the city council is easier than working through Congress.
Maybe, some days.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments for Lou?
Well, Lou, this is gonna take you to the 10-year mark. You're good with that?
With luck. I passed the 80-year mark being around here, watching this old planet go around the sun. And yeah, I would like to be able to go another three years.
Very cool. Will you scrub up good for an 80-year?
Suzanne, would you like us to do votes with each individual?
Sure, that would be great.
I think there's no competition.
No.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'll make. This one would be appropriate.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Lou Ramone to the Board of Adjustment.
I'll second it.
Okay, who wants that one? That was a tie.
I've said it, but somebody else.
I heard David.
I heard David. You counsel, you may vote. Thank you, counsel, motion. For both, if both are appointed at the same time.
Sure.
Good, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know Suzanne, I feel like when we do this online voting, and I try to click as fast as I can. I know we have the Citizens Academy coming up, so if anybody hasn't been to that, you really should go, because they have a nice little trivia set there to do there at the beginning, and you're trying to race to get it done and fast to get more points. I never saw you rush to the top of that, though. No, I was very bottom, you know.
Alright, Mr. Abercrombie, if you'd come up. And I have to use your last name, because it's not often I get to say Abercrombie.
I am more than happy to oblige.
Right. Not too old for the clothes.
Yeah, me too.
So, if you just give us a, you know, brief introduction and let us know why you'd like to continue serving, that would be great.
Sure thing. So, I'm Nick Abercrombie. I've been on, gosh, I almost forget. I think it's been about two years now I've been on the Board of Adjustment. I think that's right. And I think it's, to be honest, it's been great. I've, truthfully, Lou's awesome, if any of you don't know. He's fantastic to work with, but truthfully, the Planning Department has been great. The other board members have been great. And I think as terms of why I would like to continue to serve, it's really, I like doing something for the city. It makes me feel good. I've got small children, and it's cool. They know that dad does something they don't like. They kind of, my nine-year-old sort of asked a little bit of like, what are you doing? And I'm like, well, sometimes this happens and that happens. I think it's just an awesome example for the kids to say, hey, this is how you kind of serve your community and give back. I love this town. I'm gonna be here for, I'm not quite 80 years around the revolution, but I plan to be here when I'm 80 years around the, around the, trips around the sun. And, you know, I'd like to say that I did some stuff, and for the town, right now, this is the right level of commitment, but I love to be involved and would like to keep doing that.
Very good. Council, questions or comments?
Yeah, Nick, both you and Ramon talk a lot about space. And since, is there something with the coming down the pike with the Board of Adjustments we need to be aware of?
Not, 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 not that I know. I am, in fact, also an engineer. We actually have a handful of engineers on the board, so maybe it's some kind of gravity thing or magnetism, I'm not sure. But I think it actually, it kind of, I mean, not to go too far into weeds, but it does sort of scratch that engineering edge, right? I mean, it's looking at a set of problems and rules and questions, and how do you apply them, and what makes the most sense? And so, you get to sort of use that part of your brain for a different purpose, and it's kind of cool. So, also, space is awesome. So, that's a whole other, like.
I saw that on your resume.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your service there and to the kids in terms of coaching, so.
Appreciate that. Yeah.
Very good. Can I get a motion, counsel?
I moved to reappoint Nick Abercrombie to the Board of Adjustments.
I'll second.
You counsel, you may vote.
Board of Adjustments gives you a chance to use language logic, not just math logic.
It really does. And actually, just one other plug for Lou being awesome. The effort that he really spearheaded to look at the rules of engagement and operating procedures and stuff has been, I think, really value-added, but also really interesting and a great way to get into the board and how we operate. So, anyway, just since I got the mic, thank you, Lou.
And just so you know, the motion passed unanimously.
Alright, I'm back in.
Thank you.
Lou, if I can have you come up, and Nick will stand out here, and both of you officially sworn in.
Like one of these things?
They should. If you can reach your right hand and repeat after names. I say your name.
I.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And of the state of Colorado. The charter and ordinances. The city of Woodland Park. And that I will faithfully perform. The duties of member of the Board of Adjustments.
The duties of member of the Board of Adjustments.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. There, would you be willing to chair our.
Sure.
They asked for me, I said, no, it's not. But if they want you.
Yes, Suzanne.
It could be his vote. Thank you, counsel. Next on the agenda, we have appointments to the Planning Commission. Like the other committees we've advertised, done all the appropriate notifications that have needed to be done. There are four open positions on the Planning Commission. We have received applications from Larry Larson, who is an incumbent, a new application from Don DeZellum, and a new application from Deanne Betterman, and they are all here with us this evening.
Suzanne, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
On these appointments. There's some, I know that some of the committees have requirements, like we have to have an engineer, we have to have something, because we want to keep people with the qualifications to be on that commission. Is there anything on this commission that follows that?
Here's what.
Since we have two new.
The qualifications are, they must be at least 18 years old.
Okay.
A city resident. Now, I vet that before I bring you the application, so I know that for a fact, all three meet that requirement. Not for less than one year, and possess qualifications that are compatible with the commission's purpose and authority. So, that's the guidelines for appointment.
Okay.
So, it's commission's purpose and authority. Great question.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and start with Mr. Larson, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium. Just, I know council mostly knows who you are, but if you just give us a brief introduction and why you're interested in remaining, that would be great.
Again, my name is Larry Larson. I live at 1320 Michael Lane. I've been a resident of Woodland Park since 1987, so I guess I qualify as an old-timer at this time. And I'm interested in being reappointed, because I enjoy responsibility and the privilege to serve on the Planning Commission. I've, you could see on my application that I've had experience over 45 years, or 43 years' experience working as a planner, both as a public sector, private sector, and as a member of the planning commission. I believe the planning commission will be entertaining a very important project and dovetails with our comprehensive plan that we approved a year or so ago. And that is the code, code changes, update. And I've had extensive experience doing that here. I had experienced, I used to work for the city of Woodland Park, I should say. I had experience doing it there. And I've also had experience working at the city of Colorado Springs, doing that same type of job. And I believe very strongly that codes ought to be easy to understand, easy to apply, simple, concise, and to the point. And I think that's where we need to go with our code. And get rid of some of our redundancies.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Larson?
No. I just would like to make a comment that I've sat in on the one meeting and intend to attend more of the development code review that you all are going through, the draft document. And I have to say that I'm very impressed, and one of my, one of my observations was that with the finite, the fine digging that you all are doing, I thought, they're not gonna get this done for years, but I know you will, because you have before, and I appreciate that level of detail that you all are giving that document to make sure that it is exactly as you just described. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
There really one other reminder. How, when did you start with the Planning Commission?
Three years ago.
So, okay.
And actually, that was my second term. I was also involved with the planning commission with the approval of the 2010 comprehensive plan. So, I had to attend a three-year term at that time.
So, you've done six years now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Anything further? Can I get a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Larry Larson, appointment of Larry Larson, or reappointment, actually, to the Planning Commission.
I'll second it.
While we're voting there, I just want to also say I appreciate your temperament on the board.
Thank you.
Yes, very good.
Counsel, you may vote. Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously.
Congratulations, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Alright, let's go ahead and have Mr. DeZellum come on up. And if we could just, I think, most in the community know you, but if you just give us that brief introduction and why you're interested in serving, that would be great.
My name's Don DeZellum. I've been a resident of Woodland Park for the most part of about 25 years or so. Currently, I've been in town for the last seven. Reason why I'd like to be on the Planning Commission is, over the past years, there have been several projects and ordinances that have kind of driven wedges into our community. Some of them by people not understanding the zoning process and the coding process, some of them for other reasons. I'd like to be a part of keeping that from happening in the future by helping to make sure that in the future, that development maintains Woodland Park's unique mountain community character, cultural, cultural and environmental qualities. Help finish up the planning code revision done by Logan Simpson from the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, which I was the chairman of the sustainability portion of that, along with the parks, trails, and open space. And like to just give back to the community a little bit more than I'm doing. I was once advised by a wise mayor that the Planning Commission was a good starting point. And those are my reasons.
Counsel, questions or comments?
So, Don, what are your qualifications on the Planning Commission? We've got folks that are there that have a lot of experience in planning and have been planners in their careers. What is exactly that you bring to the table?
Well, one of the things I bring is, back when I was in college, I had to take some city planning classes during my course of studies in recreation. That was one of the requirements. I have attended several planning commission meetings in the past for various reasons. One of them to present to them for the comprehensive plan, others for other things that were going on in the community that I was interested in watching and observing the process. And probably the biggest thing I bring is probably just a common person's approach to looking at the ordinances, and what would a common person look at it and apply it. I agree with Mr. Larson's comment that the planning codes and the zoning ordinances and such need to be easy to understand. They need to be easy to apply. They should be something that a person can sit down and look at without having to have a lot of knowledge of planning. You should be able to look at it and make probably a good 95% of application of that process by reading the ordinances. So, and I'd like to be a part of trying to get that into the city with this revision.
Well, Don, I would like to certainly speak on your behalf. I think that tonight, we have a pretty full house. I would say consistently, the entire time I'm sat up here on the dais, you have shown up to engage in the political process in Woodland Park on a consistent basis. I've also been with you on some of the boards that you serve on to make a difference and have an impact. So, I commend you for stepping into the board. And I'm not sure which mayor it was who said it's a good place to get started, but I agree. It's like, we need citizen engagement on all levels, and it doesn't mean that all of our citizens are experts. But you certainly have a, have a good head on your shoulders, and you're engaged. You already know a lot of the process, so.
I was gonna say, one of the things I probably left out there is, being currently on the Parks and Recreation Board, one of the things that we do do is make advisements to the Planning Commission into the city council on whether or not to accept land in lieu of fees for projects, which means that we have to look at projects and make a decision about, do we want the land, or do we want the money for the city, for the parks? But I think most of us take it a little bit deeper, and we actually look at those projects and see, we've made recommendations that the developers have actually made changes to their plans before they presented them to the Planning Commission. So, I do do a little bit of that with that board, so.
So, I just, I have a question, one for Suzanne, and also you, Don. Since you're on Parks and Rec, can he remain on Parks and Rec? Okay.
Yeah, if I make the planning permission, I probably recuse myself from anything that goes on with planning aspects, so I'm not aware.
You mean on, on the Parks and Rec board?
Right.
Okay, yeah. And then, I was just wondering if you happen to have like an example in mind as to one of the wedges that the Planning Commission potentially caused? I was just curious.
Well, it's not necessarily the Planning Commission, but let's go back to the project Office 67 with the tiny homes where, or the small homes, or whatever you want to call them. There was a loophole there that was legally taken. Now, in the process to close up some of that and stuff, there were some other decisions made that caused a decision to be made and then reversed. But also, the citizens were very confused over the processes. How do they do things? How do they appeal? How do they do this? How do they do that? And that's why I think being part of the Planning Commission and working on getting those revisions and such that Logan Simpson is presented is important to the community. Like I said, the easier we make things, the easier it is for the citizen to understand. And I hope that that would help take away some of those wedges that get driven into things that don't need to be a wedge.
Yeah, that's a good example. Thank you.
I would just say that, so that these things are often, there's legal things that go along with this as well.
Correct.
And there are things that you should be aware of and be professionally trained in to really understand this. Planning Commission is a really important position. And I feel like, you know, as a citizen, you said, so you can put your citizen input in there. You still can. And I don't know that, I'm trying to put a butt in a seat, as we say at work, where we're looking for folks that have the actual qualifications and skills and planning experience to be in that position, to be able to make those decisions. You have to do a little bit more than just, this is what I see from, you know, from this basic understanding of what I'm doing. And we owe the citizens more than that as well. We owe them very experienced people to be on our committees when it comes to planning or Board of Adjustment, Board of Review, those types of things. So, I mean, I think you're great, Don, and I'm glad that you're serving on a committee now, and I think you served that committee very well. For myself, I am concerned that the experience level to be on the Planning Commission and understand that, and those rules and laws are maybe a little lacking. Suzanne, would you please remind us what the, what a quorum is on some of these committees? Because I know that when they were appealing for applications for this committee, they're concerned they're not going to reach a quorum. So, can you tell us what that looks like?
Um, I'm going to see if Larry, where's Larry at? Larry, can you help me with that? Karen's not here. Can you help me what you need on planning commission for a quorum?
I'm just, if you'll repeat in the microphone.
So, Mr. Larson said, in order to have a quorum for planning commission, they need five members present. I do, Karen's raised her hand. If I can have her tell you what's happening with the planning commission, that would be great.
Thanks, Sarah, for promoting. Go ahead, Karen. You have to unmute Karen. I'm gonna hold you in suspense, Don.
Yeah, sorry, I've been attending the whole time, so listening to everything. Yeah, Mr. Larson is absolutely correct that a quorum is five members. And that board, as you heard from Suzanne earlier, you can have as many as nine people on the commission. And right, well, we have had challenges in terms of reaching a quorum for certain meetings. In fact, our meeting, the first one in December, we had to cancel because we were not gonna have a quorum that night. So, that issue remains. So, hopefully, that's what you need for information from me.
So, we have four positions available out of nine, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
How many expired in this cycle?
Just Mr. Larson's.
So, is it my understanding that we have a quorum with the five?
Yes. When they all show up, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we currently have, with Mr. Larson's reapportment, reapportment, we have six members on the commission. I believe that's, I'm doing this from memory, so I believe that's where we are. Is that correct, Sue's?
Yes, so that there's still three vacancies left.
Counsel, any further questions?
I'm gonna answer my questions. Thank you.
Even with your questions? Thanks, Karen. So, can I get a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to nominate Don DeZellum for the planning commission.
I'll second.
Thank you, counsel, you may vote. Thank you, counsel. The motion has failed with Councilmember Case, Councilmember Neal, Councilmember Nakai, and Councilmember Art voting no. It's failed three-four. It's failed three, four.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on then to Mrs. Betterman.
So I have one more question before the next candidate comes up, if I can, Suzanne.
Yes, sir.
And that is, so. Once again, going back to a quorum. When I heard the planning commission concern, they're not going to meet it for whatever personal practical reasons happen. What's the impact if we have an understaffed planning commission? Because council chooses not to allow folks to join in.
Again, I'm going to defer to Karen to answer that, Karen, if you will, please. Thank you.
Yes, per the, the board's bylaws, they're required to have a quorum of five. So similar to when city council does not have a quorum in attendance, they're not able to actively conduct business. So the impact is when you don't have that quorum, if you have noticed applications for public hearings. The, the folks in the development community are not able to get. Answers or resolution or a decision out of the, a recommendation out of the planning commission at that particular meeting. So things then basically get carried forward to the next regular meeting, or if it's a scheduled work session. They're not able to, to do the, like the work on the code. We're doing that in work sessions. So basically they adjourn the meeting and we try again at the next regular meeting.
I would also just comment that Karen, there can be special meetings to accommodate schedules as well. The council's done that as well, so. It doesn't prohibit. A special meeting if needed to accommodate developers. Thank you.
Are we done with questions?
Point of orders.
Oh, yes.
I'm going to recuse myself for the following candidate.
Okay.
Let me know when to come back.
Sure. You don't actually have to leave. Ms. Betterman, if you could just state your name and just give us a, you know, a little bit of information of why you're interested on, on being on the board, that would be great.
I'm Deanne Betterman, and in February, I will have lived here for twenty-one years. I worked twelve years as a registered nurse down the pass and drove down the pass. My first excitement about being on the planning commission came from the Citizens Academy. When one night we spent time with each other and we were given a certain amount of resources and some land, and it was exciting. It was exciting to see a new city that would grow a new part of the city. And we all know that we're going to have more people come here. And. I last time only told you that I worked at the schools here in Teller County. This time I would like to tell you what my qualifications are from my curriculum vitae. I'm only going to give you very highlight, very quick highlights because it's long. I've worked at for forty-five years as a registered nurse. One of the jobs I think that would help my qualifications is being in a manager. I was a manager of staff and patients in a subacute unit at Parkmore Village, and that's here in Colorado Springs. When I was a school nurse at Colorado School for the Deaf and the Blind, we reorganized the care delivery system. And I think that's a good qualification for being on a planning commission. We had substantial progress after we reorganized the care delivery system in policy framework. And we had residential students who lived there, and that was very important to make sure they were safe. We, I educated parents and teachers on. Some of the diagnosis that go along with blindness and deafness. I was an advocate for parents because they needed to find resources for their student. Of course, when you have. Students who can't see very well and they still like to run down the street, I have to do triage. And assess what, what their needs are. I've done special care planning, and I have done, if you know what an IEP is, I would do two hundred and nine IEPs every year. When I was. Before that, in Minnesota. I was a director of nurses of a nursing facility that had a hundred patients and a hundred staff. I had to know the regulations because that facility was going to be closed. And what we call is a tag for anything that isn't done well. And within two years. My staff and I took the regulations and we, we passed with, with, with. Good, good reports. And I taught to all of the staff at that time what the state regulations were. I was a consultant to outstate facilities. And what I taught to facilities outstate was if they would write down. In their notes, all of the work that was done, the state had money. Those facilities made sometimes a hundred thousand dollars a year more after my, my organization went in. Those are the most important parts of my curriculum vitae. I went to school at UCCS, University of Colorado, Colorado Springs, and got my master's degree. And that's where. Special nursing a lot was required, actually in the community of special nurses. I learned, I enjoyed learning differential diagnosis at that time. I was a good writer at the time, and I was given some accolades for writing philosophy. Of nursing and how do you take people? How do you take people and their commonalities and you provide care according to what you, what you know about their personalities and their backgrounds? I. I believe my job, my job on the planning commission is to be a. Average citizen advocate. And I think that we do need very much architects and we need engineers. I think it would look good to have a registered nurse on the planning commission. I would like to take a look at what's laid in front of me and have a sensible reasonableness. That would come from a citizen's perspective. I think on my application, I need to clarify a couple of things. I wrote the question about the top three problems. Very quickly. As I wrote my application out. The first one, I always write our city's needs for water. And when you think about the wonderful work that Kip does, but also the men who work in utilities. When they go to work, they think about the whole city and people's welfare of the whole city. So we have, we have a good program here in Woodland Park. What I think we could turn this into a positive is, is having strategies to manage. And protect our water resources. And that would be a large community. Educational blast, I guess, and if all of us got on board. We could save our water and I wonder how impressed Kip and, and all of the other utility workers would be if. If we had a certain amount of people who would work on water management. Roads are important to me and they always will be. But I'm wondering now because we, we can limit the number of new people building. That maybe we don't have the natural resources for thousands of more people. And I know, I have learned that C dot is one of the barriers for us to have. Nice big fat roads for all of the community that could be built around us. I really have strong feelings about the average citizen taking their turn in local governance. I think that if they took their turns on all of these committees and on the city council. I think that they would have a better perspective of the work that has to be done. And they would value the decisions made by you all on the council. I think that perspectives on people's decisions here in the city are important. And I will give you an example, if a retiree. Comes here, they've spent their life savings on a home. And they take a look at this as being their very last place to live. I think they should be involved in decisions making in the. City. The last thing I want to tell you is of course how exciting our city could be. And maybe we need to get more citizens involved, but during the wintertime, we need more retail businesses. And there are other towns who have actually used horses during the wintertime. And they have a light festival, and that's just one idea that we could do up here in Woodland Park in the wintertime. And so I'm excited to see how the city grows. And I think that's everything on my list to tell you.
Very good. Counsel, questions or comments?
No, I mean, I would act with the same things that I, that I said with Dawn on this situation here. And, and I don't want you to think that because you're, you know, a citizen that you don't have say in government. Some of the citizens have more say in government than we do.
Can I, can I interrupt? Do you mind? There's nothing in our charter that says you gotta be qualified to do anything.
Actually.
Most of our citizens that want to volunteer take their own time.
Frank with Suzanne, and it says that is the, one of the qualifications is to have experience. And what did it say specifically, Suzanne?
Qualifications capable. Qualifications that are compatible with the commission's purpose and authority.
So being a nurse for forty-five years, I'm not sure that's compatible with city planning. So. That's how I feel, Frank, and I can, you can vote everyone, so.
And one comment I can just make is that we found out that the swimming pool kills COVID. And nurses are public health.
Thank you.
I would also like to just chime in on this. Avenue that you're on, Councilmember Ott, that. It is important for us to engage our community members, and there are many in this community who feel intimidated to come up before council. Because they feel they're not good enough to serve our city. I think that's doing a huge. Disservice to our community. There's always people who have experience and you always find people who come alongside them and they get experience. So to hold this thing out like, oh, you're not qualified is, I think disrespectful to our community. Particularly, particularly because of the rest of my thought. Particularly because we don't have an abundance of applications. We don't. On, if you look at the boards, there's not an abundance of applications for each of these boards. So I just ask you to consider that in your vote.
Like I say, it's disrespectful, I think, to citizens to not put people that are qualified in positions on committees. Where we're looking for some expertise to help our community. And I think it's also your personal opinion. That you think that the citizens don't have any say and that they're absolutely intimidated. To come up and do something here. When we, when we're trying to fill commissions with folks that are qualified. That have planning experience or experience in other commissions, there are other committees and other ways to serve this community. That don't require as much expertise or experience, and I would absolutely recommend that you do that, Deanne. And I think that some of these commissions do require some special knowledge, some experience in their past. That is congruent with the position that they're actually applying for here or asking us to appoint them to. Well, I think.
Gentlemen, I'm gonna interrupt, and I'm gonna say, let your opinions be reflected in your vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to just share something, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Okay.
I just would like to, to just comment that all of us that serve, including the council, including the planning commission and all of the other committees. Are citizens of the city of Woodland Park. And so we are all citizens and we all try to do the best we can to make this the best community. And we don't always agree, just like we hear that you all don't agree. But it's not personal, it's business. We're trying to do the best we can for our community. And I know that that's my approach, that's what's in my heart. And I just want to point out, we're all citizens. And we're all volunteering to try and do the best we can, so thank you.
And I'm just gonna add one, one topic of information that Deanne touched on that I would like the public to be aware of is. This city plans for their resources far in advance and for populations far beyond the population we currently have. So I just, I just want the city, the citizens to understand that we don't plan for just our current amount of citizens. And the water only fits that amount. So it's planned far in advance by incredibly intelligent, sophisticated people, including. Kip Wiley, they pay attention to it, they make sure council's aware of it. That's why we purchase water shares when we have the opportunity to. That's why we're building. A reservoir, so what, we're not gonna run out of water tomorrow or anytime soon, just so you all know. Because sometimes when people say that, it freaks people out and I don't want our community freaked out by, by that. We, we plan far in advance for population. We are surrounded by national forests, so we are limited to how we can grow. But we are already planned out for a number above and beyond what eight thousand is. And our planning committees, our planning director and our utility directors all plan way ahead of that. And councils change, there aren't always the same people, so. Even though we support those committees, they're the ones who really do that hard nitty gritty work and have that knowledge. So I just, I just wanted to clarify that, so. Okay, counsel, can I get a motion, please?
I will make a motion, excuse me.
Point.
Appoint Deanne Betterman to the planning commission, I'm sorry.
Can I get a second, please?
I will second it.
Thank you, coun- council. You may vote.
Dan.
Okay, I will. Do you want me to change it?
I'm, I'm willing to say it out loud if it's easy.
Do you want me to do the opposite of what's in here?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, is everybody good with their votes?
I just get so excited when I see the window.
Thank you, counsel. This motion has passed. It's passed with one. One council member voting no, and that was Councilmember Ott. Thank you very much. Okay.
Dan, that's not correct.
No, that's what my screen says.
I'm, I'm opposite.
I am too.
Your screen, okay?
I'm sorry. But I know I wrote it down.
Voter integrity. We see it even here.
I will.
We have Dominion. No, no, sorry, that's not fair.
Because you were saying, because you've said your votes out loud. Now it is three, three, so now it is a tie with, with Mayor LaBarre. Mayor Protim Case and Councilmember Ott voting no. Councilmember Neil obviously didn't vote, so in the event of a tie, this motion fails.
Does this supposed to come back before us again, or this just?
We, and considering that possibility, we consulted with the city attorney, Jeff Wilson. He said the motion fails and does not come back. Obviously, the applicant is entitled to come back, but it fails and does not have automatic tabling. And that's per section seven point three A of the charter.
It may have been because when I, I didn't get the voting box, and so when I do that, I have to leave the meeting and come back. So that may be why my vote.
As long as you're willing, you know, you said it out loud, you're willing, I can't change it, right?
So right.
So you guys said it, it's okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My apologies to the public.
Okay, so that all being said, I have one member to appoint to do the oath of office two for the planning commission. Okay, so. Please raise your right hand. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And of the state of Colorado. The Charter and ordinances. Of the city of Woodland Park. And faithfully perform the duties. Of the office of member. Of the Woodland Park Planning Commission.
Yeah, sorry to put you on the spot, but Kristen is our new communication specialist. So she's responsible for all the cool new social media stuff that's been going out. She's been doing a really good job and has a lot of really good ideas. So it's Kristen Higginbotham.
Okay. Finally, council, we have the in front of you next, we have the Board of Review. And again, the clerk's office advertised as per council's requirements and all of that. There's currently four available regular positions and two alternate positions on this board. And we've had incumbent Jeff Cahill, who would like to be reconsidered for reappointment. He's here with us this evening in the audience if you'd like to speak with him.
Sure, Mr. Cahill, if you don't mind just coming up to the podium and sure, most of council is familiar with you, but if you just give the give your introduction and why you're interested on remaining on the board, that would be great.
Certainly, this is kind of a not gonna say a new experience, but it's the first time I've encountered the adversarial posture of the board against citizens that are volunteering. I'm Jeff Cahill and I live at one eighty-seven Glendale Drive. I've been a resident of Woodland Park for ten years. I've been a volunteer numerous capacities in Colorado Springs for forty and licensed sign contractor for forty-four. I have been born into construction seventy-six years ago. And from the time I was maybe three or four, I was banging nails and making things with the family. We were always always remodeling, always building something, helping the uncles who are mason contractors and et cetera. And and after I get out of the Navy, the first thing I did was take a job construction. Got hurt a little bit, realized that this may not be my career path. And therefore I took my artistic abilities, combined them with my building capacity and became a licensed sign contractor and I have been doing that for many years. So everything that I'm offering to the city and I've been giving for the last six, seven years is my expertise based on my own remodeling of my own homes, building of my own home, building pole barns and garages, being victimized by the building codes and by reinterpretations of some various city officials who interpreted one way. And when you corrected it, some other official would say, why did you do that? Because they interpreted it another way. So I elected to volunteer to become a citizen's advocate and be a homeowner position on the Board of Review. As opposed to being a fully licensed contractor, building contractor, who has a vested interest in seeing things carried forth in a quasi-official position that they they stand at and but not having the empathy that a common homeowner has relative to getting a home improvement done. I've written in my application that I had misgivings about the quality of some of our building personnel. And that is a big deal to me. I only like to do quality work. I only have quality work done for me. And when I see things that are done in a shoddy manner, it it raises my hair in the back of my neck. So i- if if it were up to me, we would have testing for our our builders. Because a lot of them, as far as I'm concerned, don't belong to be journeyman categorized. So anyway, I I don't want to belabor the fact if I don't have the qualifications because I haven't passed my building contractor's license, because I only got fifty-six out of seventy. When I took my two thousand twenty test and I sat down there from Pearson View Testing Facility and I studied for a full year on my two thousand fifteen manual and they were testing to the two thousand eighteen standards. So I have the books and I refer to those books when we have a particular variance which is requested from a homeowner. And I'm pretty conversant with building techniques. And that's about pretty much my background and what I'm capable of doing. Have any questions for me, please?
Counsel.
I I have two for you, Jeff. Here.
Oh, yeah.
First is it looks like even though you were born with a hammer in your hand, it looks like sign is still a danger. Your your thumb.
Got one of those. No, I have one of those split fingertips. I've been using O'Keefe's, but it hasn't helped me very much. And believe it or not, this is a sign man's bandage because masking tape has some inherent properties to take away the pain from injury.
I can tell you.
That's not a medical fact, it's just my conjecture.
I can tell you, Jeff, I have something that will heal that up in a matter of days.
You do.
I will get it to you.
Well, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All right.
My second question to you is, so you have clearly just expressed citizens' representation on boards. And I also come out of construction and it's pretty common that you go through an apprenticeship program in most trades. And to not to think that we can fill all our positions without having those who can come up through the ranks is unrealistic. So thank you for your volunteer. You've been on board how long?
Seven to ten years.
Seven to ten years.
Thank you. I've been I've been a resident for eleven years in March and I think I volunteered the year or two after I was. Thank you. Situated, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
I just want to say I can vouch for Mr. Cahill's integrity and his commitment to our community. He happens to be a neighbor of mine and he is incredibly gracious to all of us on our street. And he comes out in a time of need when there's a lot of snow. He plows people's driveways. He takes very good care of a neighbor that I have. And our neighborhood is grateful for you and this community should be as well. So thank you.
It's my honor. I believe in giving back. Without giving, you're not living.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to pro- appoint Mr. Cahill.
I'll second.
Council, you may vote.
Now watch these votes now, Suzanne.
I know. That's why I always say them out loud. Especially the no ones. Thank you, council. This motion has passed unanimously. I would like to have Mr. Cahill join me up here.
All right, we are off and running with four additions, deletions or corrections to agenda. I don't believe we have any. Five A, we have the consent calendar and that's approval of December first, twenty twenty-two, regular council meeting minutes. And Suzanne is the presenter for that.
And it's exactly as you said, Mayor. We just need approval of the minutes from December first.
Council, are there any questions, comments on that one?
Now I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
Okay, council, you may vote. Thank you, council. Motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We are on to public comment on items not on the agenda. I don't have a sign up sheet.
I have it. Let's see. The first person that signed up has agenda item number eight, but we do not have an agenda item number eight. It's Mr. Gene Harris. I'm not sure who that is. Okay, so we'll have you come come up as an item not on the agenda. Yeah, that's fine.
My name's Gene Harris. I'm a resident of Woodland Park, live and work here. And I've heard some different concerns expressed by council members and I have a concern that the citizens of this town deserve council members who are going to honor their oath to support the constitution, the law and local ordinances. Since I've been coming to these, it's my perception that on at least two occasions that I'm aware of, I don't believe that has happened. Most immediate, one would be the short term rental question. We have ordinances that talk about what can be built where, what kind of businesses, what kind of homes and that sort of thing. So when you put a business in an area that's zoned residential and you vote that in, then I believe there is a problem in upholding your oath to support the laws because that seems to me to be a direct violation, diametrically opposed, however you want to put it. And so that concerns me a lot that that happens. And then when we have a council member who confronts someone circulating a petition, that's a problem as well. And this is my time to talk. I don't believe in yours, Neil.
I actually don't allow.
This is my microphone.
You don't have to. It's just public comment. No, it's just public comment.
So that really concludes my remarks. The short term rentals, I am all for supporting of private property rights. I'm all about that. I believe in the constitution. I too took an oath as a law enforcement officer where I worked for over eighteen years until I was forced to retire because of injury to my knees. So I know about supporting the constitution for military, average citizens, cops, whatever. And so anyways, that kind of sums it up, so I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jerry Penland.
My name is Jerry Penland. I live on Masters Drive. I'm part of the Protect Residential Property Rights. These remarks may be premature, but they need to be said as we move forward to make sure that this city council is looking at and thinking about what the citizens have told you in the last few weeks. A couple of years ago, City Hall made a mistake. And they say it made that same mistake over and over again because nobody was watching. And most of us didn't even know what was going on because it wasn't in my backyard. Then it was. With around five years of experience on our planning commission, I never expected City Hall to allow lodging businesses in everybody's backyard in our residential neighborhoods. Any reasonable person would never ever read our zoning codes to allow lodging businesses in our residential neighborhoods. After over a year, thousands of hours of city council, planning commission, city staff and us citizens, there were two similar proposed ordinances on the table. Planning commission proposed caps. What's wrong with caps? Well, there's two things. First, putting caps on our residential zoning districts will legalize STRs operating there, something never before allowed. Second, you get rid of one over here with a cap, another one pops up over there. You get rid of that one, another one pops up somewhere else. You never know where they're gonna be. And we will never ever be able to live without them again in our residential neighborhoods if you put caps. Caps or not is a nonstarter. I have to clarify something. Our mayor was quoted in the most recent TMJ. It's weird to me that the community doesn't care that the council cares about that. Unless the TMJ misquoted her, that was referring to homeowner occupied short term rentals, often called mom and pop STRs. That's really weird to me also. I have no clue who she's talking about. Our committee has always supported mom and pop short term rentals anywhere in Woodland Park with no restrictions. Several of you did not respect our zoning districts. Nor did you respect your oath of office in eighteen thirty-three one-ten to protect the character of our neighborhoods. We even had folks stand right here where I'm standing tonight, allege that we don't even know what character our neighborhood is actually means. We know. You would also know if you talked to around a thousand citizens in the last few weeks like we did. Protecting the character of our neighborhoods doesn't mean allowing groups of different strangers, transients, roaming through our neighborhoods practically every single weekend. It doesn't mean supporting lodging businesses instead of homes in our residential neighborhoods. It means having a neighborhood with neighbors, family and friends living next door, who we know and trust. We know they are there to help if we need them and we're there to help them if they need us. We voting citizens will stop anything you try to do to force us to live with investor owned, short term rentals in our residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Arne Sparnans.
All right, good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Arne Sparnans. I live in the Sunny Glen neighborhood. I'm just leading up into a request here. So now now that citizens have spoken and clearly want ordinance fourteen thirty-one repealed, I want to discuss how do we move forward to generate STR legislation for Woodland Park in a truly representative manner. Community character was already the top concern identified, you know, through the community engagement process. Now we have over nine hundred residents speaking out by signing the petition, calling for the repeal of the ordinance which allowed unlimited STRs in residential neighborhoods. You know, we need a process. You know, we need a process that upholds the concerns of the residents. Yeah. And you want to reiterate, our community character is not for sale. You know, dedicated lodging businesses do not belong in our residential neighborhoods. Clearly, you can't have a neighborhood without neighbors. And so any new legislation needs to embrace mom and pop, short term SDRs who earn extra income from their primary residences. You know, SDRs and primary residents must be the only allowed use in residential zoning districts. Dedicated lodging businesses are only are only appropriate for commercial zoning districts. And thankfully, that's well established law in Colorado. We can get into those details if we need to later. So the question becomes, how do we go about doing this? We'd like to request a special agenda topic on the January nineteenth city council meeting to review the next steps to generate STR legislation that represents the residents of the city. You know, we'll work with our council representatives to get on the January nineteenth agenda. You know, now that we have over nine hundred people that have spoken out, you know, from the community, we need to make sure we carry their voices forward. Thank you.
I had the timer set on my computer. It wasn't showing up.
Totally fine. Arnie did a great job. So I do just want to clarify real quickly for the public's information, though, that even though there are nine hundred signatures, which is great, they still have to be verified by the city clerk, and that hasn't been accomplished yet. So if it gets accomplished before the nineteenth, it's a potential to be put on the agenda. But if not, we need to wait for those signatures to be verified. So it's process. So I just want the public to be aware of the process. So doesn't mean they won't be. They, so, thank you. Suzanne, is there anyone else on Zoom? No, ma'am. All right. Moving on to seven unfinished business, we have none. Eight ordinances on initial postings, none. Nine public hearings, we have nine A, which is approval of transfer of a hotel and restaurant liquor license, and Suzanne is the presenter for that one.
Thank you, Mayor LaBarre and counsel. This evening, I would like to introduce to you the transfer of a hotel and restaurant liquor license from Woodland Park Country Lodge to Sarah Hutchinson over the Ice LLC. Woodland Country Lodge is located at seven thirty, Country Drive, Woodland Park. Ms. Hutchinson presented the city clerk's office with an application, and she meets the requirements to do so. She has a current sales tax license, business license. A petition of needs and desires is not necessary, because this is a transfer of the liquor license, and the location is eligible to be licensed. Possession of the property is documented by a lease that expires on January fifteen, twenty twenty-five. And the application was submitted to the clerk's office on November ninth. The subject property was posted December fifteen. The public notice was placed on the city's website December fifteen. And the character of this applicant is not an issue for this hearing. CBI and FBI checks were completed with no issues. All applicable fees have been paid, and Ms. Hutchinson is with us this evening. She'd like to introduce herself and tell you a little bit about what she'd like to do up there at the country lodge. So I'd like to invite her to the podium.
Hi, I'm Sarah Hutchinson. Again, like Suzanne said, I'm applying for approval for the liquor license transfer. I don't know if any of you have been to the Woodland Country Lodge, but it's an absolutely beautiful venue. And Mark, he has so many other things going that he hasn't ever really presented it to the community. I think it's absolutely beautiful, and I want to get in there and mostly for our locals to have a nice place to go. A lot of that is also for the closing of Carmen Restaurant. A lot of the customers there need a nice place to go. So I would invite all of you to come visit me and come see the location, because like I said, it's absolutely beautiful. I have named it over ice. I think, you know, most beverages are great over ice. I love specialty iced teas and lemonades and plan on having all that set up on the outside bar area this summer.
Very good. Any questions or comments, counsel?
I would just say that at Woodland Park, we do have a lot of nice places people can go. That's, I'm sure is a nice place, too, but there's a lot of nice restaurants and nice.
Okay, let me rephrase it. Another nice place to go. Okay, thank you.
I know you're here for the liquor part, but what's the restaurant part?
You know, we're in the process of working on a menu. I don't know. Well, you haven't been there. It's a very small kitchen. So right now, we're going to start out with appetizers, things like that. In the summertime, we have access to grilling outdoors and so forth. But we'll doing, we'll be doing soups, breads, things like that during the next few months while it's cold. And then once we're able to get outdoors, we'll expand the menu.
Very good. Anything further, counsel?
Looking forward to it, Sarah. Thank you, Kelly.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a transfer of a hotel and restaurant liquor license from the Woodland Park Country Lodge to Sarah Hutchinson.
I'll second.
Hey, counsel, you may vote. Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously. Congratulations, Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item B, which is another approval of a liquor license, and Suzanne will present that.
Thank you. This one, counsel will remember this gentleman. He's a pretty dynamic young man there, Roberto. You will remember him from his liquor license out at Mountanera, the new Italian restaurant in town. Well, Roberto has come to the city, and he has purchased the infamous Swiss Chalet. And so he is looking to transfer the Swiss Chalet's liquor license to his operations, which is called Swiss Operations LLC. And his name is Robert Calgano. He has a current LLC business license. A petition for this was not necessary. The location is eligible to be licensed. The possession of the property is documented by a contract when he purchased it, and now a lease. The property was posted on December fifteenth, posted on the city's website December fifteenth as well. The character of the applicant is not an issue. All CBI, FBI checks have been performed, no issues. All applicable fees have been paid, and Roberto is here to tell us what he is up to.
Hello, everyone. Last time that I was here, I don't know if you remember. I promise you that if you were going to ask me for a French dish, I would have refused. Well, now I'm going to have a French dishes at the Swiss Chalet. So I'm sorry for that. So we are very, very excited and honored to have taken over a icon of Woodland Park. I still cannot believe it, to be honest. The Swiss Chalet was the first restaurant that actually I visited five years ago when I moved to Colorado. It's always been like a very particular family owner, as you perfectly know, the previous owner. And they wanted to like to continue the legacy to a family. And they found us, and to be honest, I couldn't say no. Luckily, like banks, they were able to make this deal happen. We are working now very, very hard to reopen, hopefully in a couple of weeks, I would say. As you can see from my towns, like Jeff Cahill towns as well, working there with saw, hammer, and paint from six AM to evening to make it happen. And the changes, they're not going to be measured. They're going to be very minimal changes that I really feel a historic building like the Swiss is needed, like a little bit of new flooring, white ceiling, and revised menu. The menu is gonna, is gonna still have a couple of items from the old management, but I'm gonna extend it in a more fine dining setting, bringing food from everywhere in Europe. My new chef, he started actually under also the previous owner is very excited. He, he did work in Michelin star restaurant in California, the French Laundry for once, and other ones as well in San Francisco. So with my experience in strictly European food and his experience in Michelin star restaurant, we're gonna really elevate even more like the food scene of our beautiful city. I don't know if my wife, she has anything to add, or if you guys have any question. No, she, she's the shy one.
Counsel, any questions or comments?
Okay, I only have one comment. Please keep the Jäger schnitzel.
That was, I love Wiener schnitzel, so the one with the Jäger sauce on the side and made with veal instead of pork or chicken. So we're gonna have Wiener schnitzel.
Okay, yes, the sauce is the, is the kick, is the, yeah. Sauce.
Do you take orders for Zerguner's schnitzel? Zerguner schnitzel?
I have really a lot of requests for all these particular dishes. I promise you, we're gonna do weekly special like now I'm doing at Montanera. So I can bring in enough like a week, two weeks, all these dishes that everyone is asking me all over like Facebook, Instagram, in person. I'm taking notes in my mind of what you, you guys like. I'm gonna do, for example, a wild boar goulash, for example. It's a very particular dishes that usually is made with beef. We're gonna change it a little bit with wild boar, using the most I can local supplier. In terms of meat, Woodland Baccio Block is gonna be our main supplier of meat.
That's great.
Yeah. I, I mean, I really love, to be honest, support local businesses, local communities. Everything that I do in terms of constructions now at the Swiss, earlier at Montanera, suppliers as well, for as much as I can, I'll try to keep it local.
Anything further?
Just one of the things. So Roberto, this, this kind of reminds me a lot of when the new iPhone's coming out, and there's a line queued for buying the iPhone. When is your restaurant projected to be open?
I don't know yet. So.
That's, that's a bad market.
I'm really aiming a couple of weeks. There is still a lot going on. We are really working sixteen hours a day in there to make changes. I'm gonna have brand new equipments coming up on Monday, tables and chairs coming on Monday. I have two freight truck actually coming on that day, so don't, don't call me, please. I'm gonna be busy. Don't expect to see me at Montanera on Monday. I really cannot make it. Hopefully, two weeks. My aim would be the Friday, January twentieth. I don't know if we're gonna be able to make it mostly because of the menu. The menu is gonna be very refined, very exclusive. So we need some extra time to be able to make it perfectly right. Here, we're gonna do completely everything one hundred percent, not ninety-nine, one hundred percent made in house. We want to win awards, national awards with this restaurant. So one of the requirement as well is made everything from scratch. So everything you're gonna taste in there, it comes from raw, the, the, the rawest ingredient as possible. Lots of ambitions.
Very good. Counsel, can I get a motion?
You certainly may.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of the hotel restaurant liquor license from the Swiss Chalet to Roberto, and I can't pronounce your last name, sorry.
Calgano.
I'll second.
Counsel, you may vote. Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations and best of luck.
Thank you.
All right, off to ten new businesses. None and reports. And this evening, I don't have any, so we'll move on to council member case. Council member Connors.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Happy New Year. Just remember when you write your checks, twenty twenty-three.
Exactly, Frank. Thanks for the reminder. Happy New Year, everyone.
I have nothing.
Yeah, I have nothing.
I have nothing. And no reports.
All right, council member Zulawada.
You know, keep Woodland Park beautiful, defer to next week, so that's soon enough.
Okay, well, in that case, oh, city manager.
I had to smile a little bit about writing checks with twenty twenty-three on them. That's not a good one, yeah. No, if, if Suzanne wouldn't mind giving an update on short term rental petitions and everything else that's going on, we discussed that. I know there's a lot of interest in that. So if you would do that, just briefly, that'd be great.
Sure, absolutely. As counsel and most of the citizens know, the petition to repeal ordinance fourteen thirty-one is now in the clerk's office. The petitioners had enough signatures to keep the ordinance repealed, not repealed, excuse me, to keep the ordinance suspended. So the ordinance stays suspended as we start the process of validating the names on the petitions, which we've started. I have a nice team of staff that's assisting me. It's a very tedious process. I showed the city manager today, the whole process and what it entails and how long it takes to make sure each and every signature is valid on these petitions. So we're in the process of doing that. My hope is, not, not a promise, my hope is that I will be able to complete it, that it can come to the council on January nineteenth in whatever form that would be. If it has the sufficient signatures, it will be brought to you as a council to decide. You will get to make the decision as to whether the ordinance gets repealed or we bring it to an election. If council decides to bring it to an election, then we would like to talk with you a little bit about dates and when we would set that election for. So for now, that stays suspended. That's ordinance fourteen thirty-one. As counsel knows, ordinance fourteen thirty-two is also suspended. That's the STR moratorium ordinance. That one, I also have a petition out there that's circulating. That petition has not been returned to the clerk's office yet, does not have to be returned to the clerk's office until the thirteenth of January. If the clerk's office does not receive that petition back, that evening at five PM on the thirteenth, that ordinance will go back into effect. So the STR moratorium will be back into effect if I do not have a petition in my office at that time with sufficient signatures. So that's where we stand in both of the suspended ordinances. Are there any questions or more clarifying comments I can make to you?
And the only other thing is, council member Ock graciously mentioned, we have the Citizens Academy, and it's open for applications right now. Thank you. I believe right now we have eight applications. We have room for twenty-five, and we are getting those applications fairly regularly. So we do encourage you to apply. We, we love hosting it. We love sharing about what we do. And with, pretty much without exception, everyone who's gone through it has really enjoyed it. So please, please do sign up quickly. That will start May, or excuse me, March sixth. And when do applications close?
February twenty-fourth.
Okay. That's all again.
Okay, very good. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.